Few minutes. I understand you guys have some signs you'd like to hold up. There will not be signs allowed here tonight. It would be blocking people's view and they won't be able to hear the speakers. So, sorry guys, you can go outside and you can talk to the press or whatever, but no signs in here tonight. Okay, folks, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. My name is Shannon Heehee. I'm with the Air Quality Permits Program. I'm going to be acting as hearing officer this evening. Thank you for all coming out. I appreciate it in this weather and the heat. I'm a northern girl. This is killing me. So, I have a big statement to read and it's including some housekeeping items. So, it's going to be a little bit of a longer statement than I usually have to read. Okay. Oh, I should introduce first. Also here from the Department of Environment tonight is Mr. Angelo Bianca. He's our Deputy Air Director and Ms. Sana Sarisak is our Air Quality Permits Program Manager. She's also handling the permit. And the company is going to be represented tonight by Mr. Von Green. So, this company is... The public hearing is being held to accept comments from the public for an air quality permit application submitted by Von Green Funeral Services for the installation of one human crematory. The proposed installation would be located at their funeral home at 4905 York Road, Baltimore. The department has made a tentative determination that the crematory will meet all applicable federal and state air quality rules and regulations that may be issued. This hearing is to offer the public the opportunity to formally comment on the department's tentative determination and draft permit conditions. You all are welcome to submit comments in writing, which I will give you more information on that. Notification for the original date for this hearing was published July 17th, 2024, Baltimore Sun. Notification of the date change for this hearing appeared in the Baltimore Sun on July 24th and July 31st. Additionally, all local elected officials within a one-mile radius of the location were notified by email, as was everyone on the interested parties' list, and the information was added to the MDE website. And if you go onto our MDE website on the very front page, there on the right-hand side, there is a link for Von Green and you can also submit comments through that link. So, a docket of information containing the air quality application, tentative determination, and draft permit conditions is available on the MDE website under the Air tab, the same location you click on that link, and that docket will be updated as we continue this process. So, here's the housekeeping part. The first will be the order of statements. Ms. Sarisak is going to read her statement about the tentative determination and the draft permit conditions and the fact sheet into the formal record. And then I'm going to invite our elected officials to come up and to make a statement if they would like to. And then I'm going to invite Mr. Von Green to come up and make a statement if he would like to. After the officials and Mr. Green have made statements, I will invite people who have signed in on the sign-in sheets that they would like to make a statement. I have you guys marked off where you checked off yes. I'll be calling those people up first. There'll be a three-minute time limit and I'm going to call you up in groups of five. You come over here and sit down here because it could be a few minutes, obviously. Get comfy. And then when you're done, I'm going to ask you to go over to the far table. We have two court quarters tonight. And Cameron at the far end is going to be verifying your information so we make sure that all the right statements, this is formal, that the right statements, the right spellings, all of that is taken care of. So, okay, get that. And then after we've invited everybody up who has signed in, if someone then chooses to make a statement, I'll invite those folks up after that. So, everybody will have a chance to do that. And here's the second rule, the basic rules of consideration. Please give the same consideration to people making statements that you would expect when giving your statement. Please do not interrupt, talk over anyone giving testimony, and do not applaud. That takes time out of people's availability to speak. Any disruption can cause the court reporter to miss part or all of the statement. You do want to make sure that your comments are recorded properly. So, again, please don't speak over anybody else. There are a number of microphones along here, so as great as that can be, forgetting what people are saying, it will also pick up background noise. So, you want to be careful that you don't cause too much of that. And again, no personal attacks will be accepted tonight. If someone begins personal attack, I will ask them to leave. Please keep your statements to the topic... I'm sorry. The topic of air pollution concerns in this draft permit. We understand there are a lot of other concerns, but this permit is limited to air quality and that's the part that's going to be reviewed and addressed in the response to comments document that will be given up to everybody after the end of the comment period. Now, the comment period has been extended till August 29th. So, up until that day, feel free to call me if you have questions, email me your comments if you want to, or you can mail them by post to the department to my attention. I have business cards out on the front table and in your agenda, that side of the agenda should have my contact information as well. So, oh, and as I started to say, so the last part is going to be the presentation of the comments. So, again, what I have up here is necessarily the order in which you signed in is the order in which I got the sign-in sheets, but I will call everybody who says they'd like to make a statement. And then again, at the end of that, after each person gets three minutes, I will invite anybody up who didn't think they wanted to make a comment, but now they want to. And then if we still have time, which I don't know, we have to be out of here by 8:30, so we're going to hustle. But if we do still have time, I'll invite folks to come back up and add on to their statements that they made earlier. I do have a favor. If anyone has a really long statement that might take longer than two or three minutes to read, if you could summarize what you want to say and then hand that statement over to the court reporter, the entire statement will be added to the record. But because we're in a limited time frame, we're going to want to make sure that everybody has the option. So, if you have a 10-minute speech, just kind of bring it on down. Okay. What else? Yeah, any great statements that will work. Okay. And I got part of this down already. So, at the conclusion of the comment period, again, August 29th, all the comments received in writing during the comment period will be reviewed and addressed in making a final determination to issue or to deny the permit. The response to comments document will be prepared by the department, sent to the commentators, and those who participated in the public review process for this application, and to all the elected officials. A notice of final determination will be placed in the legal section of a newspaper of general circulation in the area. That's required by statute. That's how we're doing all of these meetings and the hearings and the notifications are all by statute. We will also place the information on the MDE webpage under that same tag for Von Green. All of this will be added to that. And then at the end, any person contending that they will be adversely affected by the department's final determination may seek remedy within the Circuit Court system of Maryland. A petition for judicial review must be filed in the Circuit Court in Baltimore City within 30 days after the publication of a notice of final determination. You will be emailed the same day that the newspaper notice is published, so it will be the very same day, so you can start your 30-day clock. Ms. Sarisak will give a statement about the tentative determination and fact sheet, and then I'll take the comments for the record. And again, this is really important because we do this with a response to comments document and because there may be people who would like to know what's going on and won't have the chance, couldn't come tonight. Two things. One is this is being recorded by MDE and it will be put up on the MDE YouTube channel. I'm not sure how long, a couple of days, I guess, to get it prepared, but it will be available then. The entire hearing will be available at that point. So, that should work out for some folks, I hope. And... October 22nd, yep. And if you ask questions as part of your testimony, we're not going to address those tonight. We take them as testimony, but at the end of the comment period, when we put that response to comments document together, we'll have the question and we'll have the answers. That way, everybody gets to hear what your question and concern was and then what the answer is. So, that's the most fair way for everybody who's interested to find out what was going on, who was asking, which questions were being asked. So, with that, I'm going to ask Sana to take over.
Hi, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, before I get started, I just want to say one clarification. The comment period is actually open through October 22nd, 2024. Shannon was saying August 29th, but there's been a one-time 60-day extension already requested. So, it is open through October 22nd, 2024, and we'll have a slide up here that gives you all that information as well. Just a clarification. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Sana Yee Sarisak. I'm the manager of the Air Quality Permits Program and the Air Quality Permit Engineer who reviewed the permit application and drafted the permit for the proposed project. The Maryland Department of Environment has reviewed the application submitted by Von Green Funeral Services, P.A., for an air quality permit to construct that would authorize the installation of a Matthews Environmental Solutions Power Pack 2 Plus 175 pounds per hour human crematory. The proposed location for the human crematory is 4905 York Road, Baltimore, Maryland, 21212 in Baltimore City. So, during the technical review of this application, I think at the community status update meeting, we talked about how we were going to go ahead and begin the technical review of the application. What we need to do is determine or estimate the emissions that we believe will be coming out of this proposed human crematory. So, some of the methods that we use to estimate emissions, we recognize that we had some crematory emission factors and standards that might have been outdated and hadn't been updated in quite a while. This is kind of an issue that has been going on on the East Coast, so we've been working with the Mid-Atlantic Regional Air Management Administration, they're also called MLAMA, to develop the best practices guidance document for estimating emissions from crematory operations. Other agencies that are involved in MLAMA and in this work group include Delaware, the District of Columbia, New Jersey, North Carolina, Central Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia, Philadelphia, and Allegheny County, Pennsylvania. And we have been meeting monthly since before December 2023 to go over all of our methods and procedures for estimating emissions from crematories so that we are developing and working together to get the most current recent inventory information for estimating emissions from human cremation. So, current 2020 US EPA Emission Guidelines or Emissions Inventory for Cremation and 2021 Bay Area, California Guidance Documents have been established as appropriate methods by this best practices or this work that we're working on to estimate emissions from crematories. So, that's what the department does. So, I didn't want to show you a bunch of boring tables and numbers, but they are available online. In Tables 1, 2, and 3 of the department's tentative determination documents, they are online. The expected emissions, you can find all of that, and the impact of the emissions are in that tentative determination document in the docket 0920, I believe is what it is, online. The permit is not expected to be a major source of particulate matter, volatile organic compounds, oxides of nitrogen, sulfur oxides, or carbon monoxide. In addition, emissions of toxic air pollutants are estimated to be less than the allowable limits determined to be protected with public health. So, what are the applicable air quality requirements that we have to use in order, that the applicant has to demonstrate compliance with in order to receive an air quality permit from the department? The first applicable air quality requirement is an opacity limit. Then there's a particulate matter emissions limit. They also have to use control technology that reduces toxic air pollutant emissions. And they also have to demonstrate compliance with our toxic air pollutant ambient impact requirement. The opacity limit, that's found in the Code of Maryland Regulations 26110804. This prohibits visible emissions from the human crematory except water vapor, that's steam, and then also during certain operations such as startup or adjustments or occasional cleaning, as long as they don't occur for more than six consecutive minutes in a 60-minute period and it's not greater than 40%. So, how are they going to demonstrate compliance with the opacity limit? The permit requires them to equip the human crematory with an opacity sensor. It's going to be interlocked with a control system that allows the operator continuously monitors the stack gases for visible emissions during operation and then it adjusts the cremation operations to prevent visible emissions from exiting the crematory stack. In addition, they're also going to be required to conduct an initial US EPA method nine opacity observation. This must be performed by an independent third party to conduct the test, and that's going to be required in the permit. Also, all of our air quality compliance program staff that have been inspecting the facility are certified to conduct method nine observations and will conduct these observations during inspection. Particulate matter emissions limit. The human crematory must meet the Code of Maryland Regulations 26110805B2A. This limits the concentration of particulate matter in the exhaust gases from the human crematory to 0.10 grains per standard cubic foot of dry exhaust gas. To demonstrate compliance with the particulate matter standard, the permitting will be either required to conduct the stack emissions testing to demonstrate compliance with the applicable particulate matter emissions limit using EPA reference method 5, or they may provide a stack test report conducted within the last five years by an independent third-party stack testing company on an identical crematory unit. The toxic air pollutant control technology requirement, Cohort 26111505 requires a permit to implement best available control technology or TBACT for toxic control emissions of toxic pollutants. For crematories, TBACT is identified as having the crematory be equipped with a secondary combustion chamber that's capable of meeting at least a one-second retention time and a minimum operating temperature of 1600 degrees Fahrenheit. The crematory must have a temperature sensor and monitor, continuously measure and record the temperature of the secondary combustion chamber, and the exhaust gases must be donated out of a stack at a height of at least 40 feet from the ground to ensure proper dispersion of the exhaust gases. Finally, Maryland has a very stringent toxic air pollutant ambient impact requirement. Not every state has this, and that's something that we found out when we were working with the MLAMA work group, that our toxic air pollutant requirements are far more stringent than other states. The Code of Maryland Regulations 26111506 prohibits the discharge of toxic air pollutants at levels that would unreasonably endanger human health. When we talk about unreasonably endangering human health, the department or the regulations set protective levels for toxic air pollutants. For each toxic air pollutant, there is a level that is set at 1/100 of the work level allowed for worker exposure at the facility itself. So, at their property line, they cannot exceed 1/100 of that number, so 1% of that number, that a worker that's working at the facility could be exposed to from an occupational standpoint. They have to be below that level. If the toxic air pollutant is considered carcinogenic, there are additional protective levels that are added to ensure continuous exposure to that toxic air pollutant for a period of 70 years would not cause an increase in lifetime cancer risk of more than 1 in 100,000. So, to demonstrate compliance with this air-toxic ambient impact requirement, the applicant is subject to a number of limits. They can only cremate human remains in the crematory, and they cannot cremate more than two human remains during any eight-hour period. In addition to that, they can't combust anything halogenated, like halogenated plastics including PVC body bags or polyvinyl chloride body bags or PVC pipes, and they can't combust anything that's considered hazardous waste or hospital medical or infectious waste. They have to conduct stack emissions testing for emissions of metallic toxic air pollutants, including mercury, to demonstrate compliance, or the permit may provide a stack test report conducted within the last five years by an independent third-party stack testing company on an independent crematory unit. So, what we found with the stack test reports in this MLAMA work group is that almost all of them were fairly consistent from crematory to crematory. So, this is what we've proposed in the permit. In addition, there are a lot of other added protective measures in this permit. We recognize that this is an environmental justice area. The things that we have added to ensure continuous compliance are above and beyond any other crematory in the state of Maryland. Not only the stack testing requirement, the opacity sensor requirement, but they must also develop and maintain an operations and maintenance plan that's approved by the department. And the plan has to include the proper procedures for proper operation and maintenance, periodic monitoring, what they're monitoring, what they're looking for, what the values are, all the records that they have to keep. And if they had to do anything or make any corrective actions, what those corrective actions are and what they're supposed to do. In addition to that, they have to keep lots of records, continuous records of flue gas temperature at the outlet of the secondary combustion chamber. Also, for each cremation, they have to have logs that show the date and start time of each cremation, the approximate weight of each charge, and the duration of each cremation cycle. They also have to have records of the description of the remains, the place of origin, the record of receipt, accompanying materials to be cremated, and an identification of materials removed from the remains prior to cremation. They also have to keep records of all maintenance performed on the crematory, including the date and description of the maintenance performed and the actions taken. They have to keep a copy of the O and M plan after it's approved by the department. And they have to keep records of all the results of the opacity observations and stack emissions tests performed. So, as I stated previously, the conditions of this draft permit construct such as the opacity sensor, the stack testing requirements, the O and M plan, the operations and maintenance plan, represents the most stringent requirements that we have ever, the department has ever put in a permit construct for a human crematory in the state of Maryland. They have to demonstrate initial compliance with these requirements and apply for and obtain a state operating permit. If they're unable to demonstrate initial compliance within the initial 180-day temporary operating permit, they won't have a full permit to operate to operate this crematory. In addition, as a state permit to operate source, they have to annually certify their actual emissions regulated pollutants from the facility, and they must report all occurrences of excess emissions. On top of this, there are many other requirements this crematory is subject to outside of the air quality permit to construct. One is the requirements from the Baltimore City Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals or BMCA. This limits the type of human remains that can be processed in the crematory unit to only those owned, operated, controlled by Von Green, so it's not going to be a commercial operation where they can bring in human remains that are not affiliated with their company. And also, they can only process human remains that have had all teeth-containing mercurium album to remove. This is kind of important because we're still having them test for mercury. We're still having them test for other metals because in the event that they weren't removing the mercury amalgams, we want to know or we want to see if there's any mercury emissions. And all of our emissions estimates are based on the fact that they did not remove the mercury amalgams. So, the two cremations per eight-hour period is based on the protective level for mercury, as if there is still mercury in those human remains, even though the general requirement requires them to remove them before cremation. In addition to department environment requirements, there's Maryland Department Health requirements. The state board of morticians and funeral directors also regulate and inspect crematory facilities and require training for crematory operators. They require that all hazardous objects be removed from human remains and cremation containers and then properly disposed of before cremation. Cremation containers must also comply with all local state and federal governmental emissions regulations. So, I'm going to leave this up here after we call for comments, but that's basically my public hearing statement, but I did want to clarify again, written comments can be submitted through October 22nd, 2024. So, let me just open that, I guess, up to comment. And you said three minutes, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to put a timer up here for three minutes. It's going to be a loose three minutes. We'll see how long this goes.
Senator, do you want to go?
Is there a list of the hazardous materials and the infectious medical waste that you're worried about on your website that we can look at? You said that no remains that have infectious medical waste or hazardous materials be cremated. Is there a list of what's considered those things somewhere?
Okay, so the hazardous materials that have to be removed are regulated by the Department of Health, so they do have a list of those materials that are required to be removed. They cannot actually be handed over, the cremated remains cannot be handed over to Von Green for cremation until those are removed.
Okay, again. Okay, folks, again, hold off asking questions for your testimony so we can make sure it's all recorded as part of the formal comments and then we can formally address them. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all staying cool. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. For the record, I'm Senator Mary Washington. I represent the 43rd Legislative District. And just to be clear, what we're talking about is air pollution. So, and the requirement that under Maryland law, anyone, that the Maryland Department of the Environment evaluate any new source of pollution. So, it's already, of course, been determined that a crematory is a new source of air pollution. And therefore, the department must determine and can determine whether or not a proposed use complies with all of our air quality regulations and meets all our air quality standards when evaluating the application. So, as a part of the application process, this evaluation, the department notifies and engages the public, and that's why we're here today. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So, on June 8th, 2020, Von Green Services submitted an air quality permit to construct, and that permit was to add a crematorium to their existing funeral home. And that's an allowable conditional use. It's not a by right use. It's a conditional use. And the department held its first public meeting on December 20... December 2nd, 2020, and since then, it's met with the public at least three times. So, we've had at least three times where we've talked about this particular application. And at every single meeting, there has been strong opposition and serious concern expressed by not only residents that live directly adjacent to it, but individuals who are tracking human health across the state and in some cases, across the country. So, as a representative of this jurisdiction and the people directly impacted, I stand with these committed residents here, the businesses and the property owners who relentlessly oppose the siding of a human crematorium less than 500 feet from homes that are already impacted by poor air quality. So, dozens of neighborhoods from Guilford to Lock Raven to Woodburn to Perrin Lot, Lake Echam to Gogans, all have come forward to express their opposition, resulting in a united front. How often does that happen in Baltimore? Hundreds of individuals, signatures, and hours of testimony asking the department to deny this permit application. Students from Loyola and Notre Dame, church leaders, neighborhood associations, environmentalists, all have had the same message. Please do not allow a human crematorium to be built in a densely populated Baltimore city neighborhood. However, the numbers here tonight do not accurately reflect the widespread and fervent opposition. While, again, it fills this room, it does not reflect the many people who have. Many are absent due to the expeditious scheduling of this year. The first notice was given July 25th. The hearing was scheduled less than a month, 23 days to be exact. And then we see that the actual public notice was even later than that. It was July 25th, so sort of less than two weeks. So, as such, the community has had to scramble to thoroughly review the draft, to gather their thoughts and comments, to make time to attend this hearing, demonstrating their unwavering commitment. Additionally, just last night, just not for nothing, it's very hot in this room, and it is known that there is no air conditioning in this room. And last night, a number of city events were canceled due to heat, so I just want to make note of that as well. So, scheduling and hearing so quickly curtailed the efficacy of the department's public messaging and its public engagement process. And in fact, it raised an unnecessarily and unavoidable barrier to inclusive and transparent permit review, which is what we are here today. So, the department and the stakeholders responsible for preserving public health should note that tonight's public testimony is incomplete. I sent the department a letter of concern and asked them to reschedule this hearing to September to allow more public participation, the day after Labor Day, as a matter of fact. But obviously, that request was not accepted. If anyone's interested in receiving a copy of this letter, please contact my office. Now, while the draft permit conditions, now on to the permit, it does reflect an important step forward. The permit commissions can still, however, be strengthened to further protect health and safety of neighboring communities. The department and state has an obligation, regardless of zoning, regardless of allowable use, ultimately and fundamentally, it is our responsibility to protect communities from undue harm. The need for tighter regulations and management of even small incinerators is vital to this process, and it is very urgent that especially in areas already overburdened by pollution and other environmental hazards such as MTA, the MTA bus line, another sort of fun fact, is the highest, has the greatest traffic of MTA buses traveled down the York Road corridor. A crematory, even when we close some of these gaps to improve human health, a crematory does emit toxic pollutants such as mercury, lead, and dioxins that damage the environment, the trees as well as human health, and people who live near it. And as was mentioned earlier, that the proposed crematory site is within a area And as was mentioned earlier, that the proposed crematory site is within an area that has an environmental justice score of 95. What that means is that it is more environmentally burdened than 95% of the communities in the state, 95%. Okay. So the pollution burden, in combination with the direct exposure and proximity of air pollution like factories and roadways and fast food places, and the cumulative impact of this says that what we should be doing is rather than adding more pollution to the harm for these areas, we should be striving to establish health equity and true environmental justice regardless of the safety measures and permit conditions imposed. This incinerator will still produce harmful emissions in the area already burdened. The potential harm to the community cannot be overstated, and as I said, the air quality permit should not, or I'll say now, ultimately, my comment, while, you know, there have been adjustments, that the permit should not be granted. Additionally, the department should continue, should it decide to approve, it must strengthen the permit conditions to mitigate harm. So we conferred with resident experts, some metal engineers, I'm sure you might hear some of this, environmental health scientists with deputies of experience, and there are at least three suggestions. One, the recurring stat tests, testing once every five years or testing another stat somewhere else is just not, is not acceptable. There should actually be recurring stat tests throughout that five-year period, and that the crematory is, to ensure that it is operated within regulatory limits. Also, while we did note that the Baltimore Board of Zoning or Baltimore Regulations require removal of synthetic plastics, we'd like to actually see that in the permit. Additionally, in the permit, the provisions that only bodies currently owned or operated, sorry, only bodies from currently owned or operated by Von Green can be sent. These requested additions are more than reasonable, and their inclusion should demonstrate that the department, the state of Maryland, abides by its mission to protect and restore the environment for the health and well-being of Marylanders. The proposed development or approval of a conditional use has been contested since June 2020. It's not, the length of time or how long someone's waited should not come into consideration. In other words, part of the reason I was given why this was held so quickly is that, well, the operator has been waiting a long time. Well, I would say these communities have been waiting a long time to breathe clean air. They've been waiting a long time to understand that their health matters, that their communities matter, and they've been waiting a long time to stop simply saying that we stand for environmental justice, or what are they saying, instead of just talking about it, be about it. And so they've been waiting for that. So this community has since, has sought every avenue to stop this. And it's not about preventing a business from meeting customer demands. In fact, there's a known location that is not adjacent to any commercial properties that the owner put in back. So we have options for this. And we understand that the use of cremation as a choice is increasing in popularity. And in fact, we should note that when these laws were written and the regulations were written, only 10% of the population used cremation as an option for the final disposition. Now upwards of 60 to 75% of people are projected to use that. So again, if we're still using standards that were based on 10%, when now it's actually going to be upwards of 60 to 7% from the very beginning, it's going to be underevaluated, it's not going to be evaluated properly. So again, as I said, for too long, we've allowed the desires of business to overtake the consideration of the destruction that might be to our environment. We cannot afford to allow this situation to persist. I will not stand for it as your representative. We have to prioritize, we can feel the temperature, we see the rain, we see the changes in the environment. Continuing to contribute to this as simply a trade-off for economic development is just no longer palatable. So at this point, the Department of the Environment is the only agency that can do what's necessary to protect the lives of the people in this room and their families and their businesses. I urge you to take this responsibility and stand up for the public health and do not grant this air quality permit. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Green up. Is he here yet?
First of all, I'd like to express my appreciation to the Huber Church for their hospitality in hosting this meeting, their concern for the community, and allowing the community to engage in this environment. I want to thank the Maryland Department of the Environment for all the hard work that they've done over the last four years in working on this process. I'm sure it's been stressful for them. And I want to thank everyone who is here this evening, and I certainly want to thank those persons that for the last 20 years or so have been faithful to the partnership that the East Baltimore community has had with Von Green Funeral Services. My name is Von Green. I am a licensed funeral director in the state of Maryland, and I'm the owner of Von C. Green Funeral Services. I started working at a funeral home when I was 15 years old. My grandfather was friends with a local funeral director, and my father impacted me, the benefits of hard work, got me a job working for a funeral home in West Baltimore. My job was maintaining the parking lot, mowing lawns, vacuuming the carpet, maintenance-type work. And I worked for him throughout high school. I'm a product of Baltimore City Elementary School, Junior High, Senior High, and I went to college in the state of Maryland. Once I graduated from high school, I knew funeral service was my calling. I feel it's a God-ou-Dein professional, God-ou-Dein calling. So I went to mortuary school, got my degree in mortuary science, and I went back to the funeral home that I worked for as a youngster. I was promoted as manager. I worked for James Morton Funeral Homes in West Baltimore for 15 years before I founded Von Green Funeral Services with my partner, Bill Miller, in 1996. A lot of changes have taken place in funeral service over the time that I've been in funeral service. I'm not going to tell you how old I am now, but I've been doing this since I was 15. And the only other job I had was a paper route, so I've been hanging around the funeral industry for a long time. 50% of the citizens of the state of Maryland choose cremation as the mode of disposition. Actually, in the United States, it's higher, in some geographies, it's as high as 70 to 80%. In my community, because I mainly serve the African-American community, right now, about 30 to 40% of that number is cremation, and it's increasing every year. These are services that the community is requesting from me.
What community?
I'm not marketing, I'm not marketing cremation. I'm providing these services because these are the services that the community that I serve is requesting from me. I'm simply trying to provide services that the people need, and the people are requesting of me without having to put them through the uncomfortable process of having their family member outsourced outside of the city where they live. As it stands right now, when a family entrusts their loved one to my care for cremation services, I have to outsource their decedent to a third-party vendor. That third-party vendor is not located in Baltimore City. So the decedent from Baltimore City has to be transported to Baltimore County to a crematory that handles those services. These are lifelong residents of Baltimore City. These are persons who are part of the very fabric of what Baltimore City is, and they have to be transported outside of the city that they love because those services are not available for them in the community where they live. I am one of the trusted community partners that the family decides to call when they are in need of these services. If they wanted to use a cremation vendor in Catanceville outside of the city, they would have simply called those persons. They call me to minister to them in their season of need. Me having to entrust them to a third-party, this third-party that I have to entrust them to, a family doesn't even know. So they have to go through the stress and anxiety of a family member being transported to a vendor that they're not familiar with, and personally, I have to absorb the liability if there's an issue. I can't contain or control my liability because if a third-party vendor has an accident, the liability is on Von Green Funeral Services because they trusted their family member to my care. I have been a trusted community partner for more than 25 years, and the African-American community has provided tremendous support in the partnership with Von Green Funeral Services. I would never, please hear me clearly, I would never, ever bring services to the people that I serve, the people that I worship with, the people that I play golf with, the people that I network with, I would never bring services to those people that I thought were harmful. The reality is, there's opposition, but there's also significant support. I have pastors in their churches that I've served in there that serve their communities. I have letters of support where pastors representing over 20,000 parishioners support having this service available in their community. They don't want to continue to see their members, their family members outsourced to Baltimore County because these services aren't available to all more city residents. I have served over 18,000 families that have put their confidence and trusted me. They wouldn't be doing that if they didn't trust me. Three to 350 families every year call me for cremation services. Those decedents have parents, sisters, brothers, friends, and by calling me for cremation suggests that they are supporting this process. Because if they didn't support this process, they wouldn't be calling me and asking me to provide these services locally. The reality is, there's more support for this project than opposition. There are 100 people in this room. She just mentioned eight to 10 communities, and there are hundreds of people in this room. I get 100 phone calls a month encouraging me to keep on to provide these services to the people that are calling on me. That decedent said, we selected Matthews and...
I had asked everyone to please not talk over people. I want you to show the respect that we will be showing to you. So please let Mr. Green finish his statement, and then I'll be inviting everybody.
I'm going to leave, because this is a joke. Okay, so I'm going to leave, no problem, but I have six family members, I live less than 200 feet from there, I can walk out my yard, look right there, if Von Green is there. I have grandchildren that are there, my mom and me, right? So it's a joke. It's disrespectful to us.
Don't leave, Senator.
Don't leave, Senator. Come back.
And also, her sister feels everybody, and please don't put her out, allow her to continue to be here and express her opinion and be a part of this process. We selected Matthews Environmental Solutions for this project. They are the market leader nationally and internationally for cremation equipment. I knew in serving this community that I wanted the very best in terms of technology and the very best that was available. I knew that this company was known for that. They have a reputation of being the best out there, and that's why I sought them for this project. They will continue to be an important partner in the operation of the facility, if nothing else, because I know that that's what the community wants, they want oversight. I like to emphasize, I would never do anything harmful to the community I serve. I have employees and family members who work at the York Road location. I would never put them or anybody else at risk. Crematoriums operate safely in every county in the state of Maryland, and all over the United States of America. Cremation has been around since biblical days. There's just one just north of me in Towson, and there's another in West Baltimore. There haven't been any issues because if there were, they would certainly be highlighted. There's nothing that nobody has found that suggested that a crematory in Maryland has been responsible for illnesses and catastrophic challenges involving people. If there were, those issues would be in raise, and the reasons that they're not being raised is because those issues don't exist. I began this process fully aware that the Maryland Department of the Environment has a reputation for having amongst the strictest emission standards in the country. The emissions from our facility will be way under those standards. As a lifelong Maryland resident, thank you for the work you do. And in conclusion, I'd like to say that the opposition likes to refer to the crematorium as an incinerator.
Because it is.
It is.
Incinerators incinerate trash, refuge, garbage, the parents, the brothers and sisters, the children, the family members who have services with the urn present, who put their remains, cremains in jewelry and wear it around their neck. They don't consider their family members trash. It is not an incinerator, a crematorium is a controlled process that is approved method for the final disposition of human remains. Thank you so much for the privilege of allowing me to share. Again, thank you, MDE Huber Church, and again, thank all of you. Some of you I've served over the years, pray that their partnership continues to move forward, and may God continue to bless you and this community, and may heaven continue to smile upon you, is my prayer.
How close do you live to the incinerator?
Howard County, that's where it is.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to call people up five at a time to come and sit, to sit over here, and then we'll speak, when this first five goes, I'll call the next five, et cetera. There will be a three-minute timer, I think someone's going to have that up there for you. And again, it isn't necessarily the order in which you signed in, it's just the order that I have the sign-in sheets, but we will get to everybody. Is it Sephora or Zippy Horowitz? Vincent Smith? Thank you for your patience. Make sure I got this right. Okay, so Mr. Tompkins, if you want to come up, I need you to do a state and name and spell it for the court reporters.
My name is Jeff Tompkins.
Take it out.
Jeff Tompkins, J-E-F-F-T-O-M-P-K-I-N-S. Jeff Tompkins, J-E-F-F-T-O-M-P-K-I-N-S. I'm here because we, my community, who I'm very proud of because they've stood up for themselves and the health of our neighbors, has opposed this crematorium vociferously for a long time. And I think it's very important to point out, why was the word incinerator even brought up here? It's because incinerators are not allowed in residential areas. And I believe that it is a very arbitrary kind of distinction to say that incineration of human remains are somehow different qualitatively than incinerator or anything else. So it's my opinion that the MZA should never have approved the permit to begin with. But that's where we are right now. What I wanted to say to MDE is that I work in computer science and analyze data a lot. Data is very important to tell the story, to address, to prove the compliance. And I believe the one thing that I would want to say is, this must not be a one-and-done sort of thing. The data needs to be meaningful, and it needs to be of the staff, and it needs to be repeated so that we can be assured of our health. The reason also that we have vociferously opposed this crematorium is that 95% environmental justice score is 95% bad. Any additional pollution is adding on to an already bad situation. Any pollution, any additional pollution. So we don't want it. If it's here, we need to have it continuously monitored in a meaningful way so that we can be assured of the science and the data. It needs to be transparent. And I believe that it's furthering the mission of MDE to keep us, keep the residents of Maryland safe. That's primary. So I would just like to say, keep the data real, keep us safe, and keep the standards up to date. That's all.
Okay, if you wish to share, thanks. Or you can go wait. Do you want to use this one?
Hi, I think.
And again, you just say your name and spell it?
My name is Sephora Horowitz. That's T-Z-I-P-P-O-R-A-H, and then last name is H-O-R-O-W-I-T-Z. I work with the Chesapeake Climate Action Network. Thank you for the opportunity to submit comments on this permit for the installation of a Matthews Environmental Solutions Power Pack 2 Plus Human Crematorium. We carefully reviewed the permit application after attending the meeting on December 13, 2023, on the proposal. Before addressing the specific technical complaints with the draft permit as written, we would like to highlight several factors that weigh heavily into our concerns about the proposal. MDE has not sufficiently taken into account the strong community opposition to the project. MDE's permitting system for crematoria is not designed for a source of this type with population density like this. And the area chosen for this project is already overburdened with other environmental pollutants, is a hotspot for asthma and other conditions, making the proposed facility an extraordinary burden on an already suffering community. MDE should apply increased scrutiny to permits for air applications for air pollution sources in and near zip codes with high scores on environmental justice score cards as rated by the EPA. As the process moves forward, MDE should take into account several factors to assure that the best available technology to reduce the risk to human health is available to the community. The United Nations Environmental Program has laid out best practices for crematoria operations in the Stockholm Convention on Persistent Organic Pollutions for UN Standards. Based on these UN standards, we have several concerns with the permit as written. First, the permit lists the equipment as the Matthews Power Pack 2 Model Plus IE43 PP2 Plus. I asked for the technical specifications from the company and reviewed them. It only measures opacity, not carbon monoxide. Carbon monoxide monitoring is the best practice because monitoring for this colorless gas can be an early indicator that some part of the process has gone wrong in a way that could harm human health. Carbon monoxide is sometimes used by the EPA as a proxy pollutant for hazardous air pollutants or HAPs, generally because both can be byproducts of incomplete combustion. Therefore, MDE should pay particular attention to this flaw. The equipment listed in the permit is also intended to run automatically for long periods of time without staff on site. A key component of crematorium safety is the ability to react when equipment malfunctions. A polluting facility of this size in a densely populated area must have staff on site to reduce response times when equipment fails. The standard process for reviewing crematorium requirements, as MDE conceded at its public meeting, is insufficient for the current application due to the proposed crematorium's location in a densely populated neighborhood. One key best practice to minimize equipment failures and risk to human health is to regularly inspect equipments, although MDE's current process only inspects crematorium in the event of a complaint. Just 10 more seconds and I will finish.
Fast, really fast.
Okay. MDE should not allow Vaughn Green to operate without a permit with inspections on a schedule recommended by UN Standards. Similarly, the application does not contain a robust monitoring system procedure despite regularly monitoring being considered a best practice. I see that that's been added. I'm curious about the details of the scheduling of the monitoring and how available those results will be to the public. And I just want to see that they're doing what they said they're gonna do.
Great. Oh.
I'll bring a card.
Oh, that would be great.
My name is Vincent Smith, V-I-N-C-E-N-T-S-M-I-T-H. I don't have nothing written. Basically, coming off the top of my head, I lived in that community all of my life, 60-plus years. And I work in the wastewater field. So I'm wondering about the odor that's going to come through the emissions through that building. Are they going to have some sort of odor scrubber that's going to scrub the emissions coming through there? That's one question I wanted to bring to the table. The other thing is, if this thing is installed in 10 years from now, we find out people start to get cancer because cancer is like running rapid now. So, I mean, there's children in my neighborhood, and if this thing is needed, it's not for us to be penalized for it. Move it somewhere else. Buy some land somewhere out in the Hagerstown. You know, but don't bring it down in that area. As they spoke earlier and said about it being densely populated and the pollution factor already existing, why would you do this now? I mean, y'all granting the permits. Y'all shouldn't do it. So that's all I got to say.
Hi, Karen DeCamp. I live in Radnor-Vinston, K-A-R-E-N-D-E-C-A-M-P. I just wanted a couple of comments for MDE. This is a terrible time, a terrible location and place for this hearing. And it's really disrespectful to this community. This is two miles from the affected community. This is in a pretty hot room. At 5:30, which is when most working people are getting off work and trying to get over here. I suggest that a best practice for MDE be that the permutee not be allowed to pick the time, place, location. Just a couple other quick things. I hear a lot from MDE about environmental justice. I hear a lot of mouthing of environmental justice. And, you know, the MDE with its own scoring, 95 out of 100, means this location is one of the worst possible places to put another source of pollution, right? So basically, if we are committed to being about environmental justice, we should be about correcting the years of environmental injustice where we put pollution sources in Black and Brown communities. Or we gave people in those communities more than their fair share. And so we need to be about correcting that. So just issuing a permit, putting some conditions on it, good start, needs to be a hell of a lot stronger than that. And I think some people are going to cover that. But I just want to read out to you, circle back to the issue of getting people two miles over here right after work, it's the dinner hour. The MDE has said, quote, "It's important that residents who may be adversely affected..." Anybody here going to be adversely affected? "...by a proposed pollution source be aware of current environmental issues in their community in order to have meaningful involvement in this permitting process." Hauling people here right after work, two miles away from the affected community. In August, when many people replied back to me, "I can't make it. I'm not going to be here. I can't make it from work." Not great. Please, please, please correct your practices, MDE. And I want to say that the environmental justice part of this, the idea of correcting the injustice that we've done to Black and Brown communities, you have a special duty here to protect this community and make the permit conditions as strong as they possibly can. Recurring stack tests, so we have at least some information besides, gee, how opaque is the smoke? That's what we need from you. We need strong permit conditions. Do better.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Halsted. I represent the Yvesham Park Neighborhood Association. I'm here today to express our strong opposition for the proposed permit at Vaughn Green Funeral Services. Our concerns are rooted in the significant environmental and public health impacts that this facility would bring to an already burdened community. According to MDE, the EG score or EJ score is 95%, which has been mentioned here tonight several times. Baltimore faces significant public health challenges related to air quality with pediatric asthma-related emergency visits occurring at more than double the statewide rate. But yet, this permit would allow an incinerator to be within walking distance of three schools and two parks. When you state that there are no other crematory permit in Maryland at this time that requires this level of testing to verify emissions, I think it's crucial to provide context, as you've kind of touched on in the beginning. From what I've researched, there's been no new permits issued for crematoriums in Baltimore cities since 1999. Could you confirm that is the case? If so, we ask, what were the standards that were last approved for the permit in 1999? And how have regulatory requirements evolved since then? Without this context, it's impossible to fully understand the adequacy and effectiveness of the current testing protocols. It raises serious questions on whether the proposed standards are sufficient and in good faith to protect our community's health and environment in the face of modern challenges. Additionally, but not without consequence, the environmental impact of crematoriums is substantial. On average, heights of size produce roughly 28 metric tons of CO2 annually, and it would require about 1,300 mature trees each year just to offset the carbon emissions from one crematorium. This directly conflicts with Baltimore's Climate Action Plan, which aims to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2050. I don't think that this will get us there. We urge the board to consider these factors seriously, as you are the Maryland Department of Environment. Approving this permit would not only counteract our city's climate goals, but will also place additional health burdens on our community's most vulnerable populations. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'd like to invite up the next five. Hi, sorry. Okay, so the next five I want to bring up, if they're available, is Dave Arndt, Karen Thompson, Cindy Camp, Sophie Valkenburg, and Dan Pontus. Just remember to state your name and spell it for the court reporters.
Okay, hello, my name is Dave Arndt. I'm a Baltimore resident and co-lead of Maryland Legislative Coalition Climate Justice Wing. And I'm kind of deeply upset at what's going on here and what MDE is allowing. And basically, I'm looking at kind of one of the first principles is self-regulation doesn't work. And that's what you're really saying that you really want to have happen here, is self-regulation, that Vaughn Green will regulate themselves and hopefully everything goes okay. And you're just going like, hopefully it does, and you're judging things on estimates and maybe five years, things go good or not so good, and then maybe we'll come back and maybe do another test or maybe take a test from some other location. That is really ridiculous. We really need strong monitoring. And if you really think about everything that can come out of an incinerator, this is a human incinerator, but it is an incinerator. Let's just look at things. We got PFOS. We don't even know what the limits should be for PFOS right now. What happens if you're burning and PFOS are coming out? These are chemicals that do not destruct at that temperature. We've got dioxins. We've got lead, mercury, and PM 2.5 that can be coming out. Well, you're coming back and saying, well, we trust Vaughn Green that they won't be coming out. How do we really know? You need to really have monitoring, and you need to have monitoring that is reported to the public, really like on a website, that we all can see, and we can see daily what is happening at the incinerator. So this is something that really needs to work. There also has to be mandatory notification if things go wrong. Not, oh, you may find out a year from now. And we need to have shutdown procedures that everybody knows about, that if something does go wrong, things will be shut down immediately. The one thing I also have to do is talk to Vaughn Green here. This last year, we passed a bill in the state that allowed for water cremation. Why not use water cremation? You say people want to be cremated. Choose a different source. You can buy water cremation now in Maryland, install it, and then we can be pollution-free. So please, if you're really concerned about the people in the neighborhood, install a different type of crematorium. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cindy Camp, and I live in 500 block of Radnor, which is less than 200 feet from the crematorium. My family, my mom is 89. My brother's bedroom has been for at least seven to eight years. I have three grandchildren, all of which has asthma, residing right there. So if you look out my window, there's one bedroom. So I'm concerned about the health effects that will have on the people in the neighborhood now, five, 10, 20 years from now. Will metals and toxins settle in my yard where my grandchildren play? Will more particles in the air make worse the high childhood asthma rate on our blocks? MDE, you can't tell us whether this is safe for us now because you are using outdated emission factors. You can't tell us if this will affect our health in the future because your permit calls for one test of the smoke stack on startup of the crematorium. Do better. We want more frequent smoke stack tests and limits on the number of bodies and hours of operations and more. So when you look at me, I am my community. It's a marginalized community. We have enough issues so we don't need any more emissions or toxins in our community. We deserve better.
Hi, I'm Sophie Valkenberg, S-O-P-H-I-E-V-A-L-K-E-N-B-E-R-G. I'm a resident of Radnor-Winston, right behind the post office, and also my dad is a lung cancer survivor, so not starting off super strong. So I want to also start by calling attention to something that all of us in the room are now aware of, that the environmental justice score for the Winston-Govern Census tract is 95. This predominantly black community already deals with a variety of environmental pollutants, like those from the 20,000 vehicles that drive through busy York Road each day. Compounding impacts from further sources hurt real people. The permit requires some additional measures because of this, but they need to be stronger. According to the EPA's EJ Screen Program, the Census tract of this neighborhood has a significantly higher asthma rate than the rest, than the average of the state of Maryland. On top of this, several studies have shown that childhood exposure to air pollution has been linked to a significant increase in asthma diagnoses. This health disparity demonstrates that this family-oriented community already carries a much larger stress compared to the rest of the state. Because of this, we as a community are calling for stronger regulations. We want all medical implants removed, we want required and frequently recurring stack and opacity tests for, for this specific Von Green crematorium. No substitutions for similar crematoriums may be made. The MDE must update the 30-year-old particulate matter emissions limit. And for this permit, we urge that the MDE use these suggested regulations along with limits on frequency of burning and the source of bodies to compensate for this outdated, outdated standard. The drafted permit violates the human right to clean air of an already overburdened community. I strongly urge that the MDE reconsider this permitting decision and strengthen the current regulations and limitations. This community deserves and has a right to clean air. Do not pollute and hurt the city and community you claim to love so much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dan Pontius, D-A-N-P-O-N-T-I-O-U-S. I, since 2018, I've been the president of the Radnor-Winston Improvement Association, right across York Road from, from the proposed
crematorium. And since May, I'm the very new president of the York Road Partnership, which is a coalition of 30, more than 30 member neighborhoods and institutions along York Road. And I'd like everyone affiliated with York Road Partnership, you could stand up right now, stand up, stand up. Let's show everybody who are here, these are folks in the neighborhoods along the York Road border. And we are all standing together, together with people like Cindy Camp you just heard from, who live less than 200 feet. There are, we, we have stated as a, as a coalition, that we believe that this was not an appropriate site because people live so close. The BMCA, when they heard the zoning, they said, well, we, you know, we have to defer to MDE, we don't know about health, even though the city code requires them to make their own whole determination. We appealed that, the Appellate Court of Maryland just ruled, well, no, that was okay after all. So, so it's all up to you, MDE. Like, we, we tried other avenues to protect our citizens from the pollution from this site, and the only one left, Maryland Department of Environment, is the only entity standing between the pollution from this proposed crematorium and the families who live less than 200 feet, and, you know, right around that crematorium. So it's all up to you. The permit kind of is proud that, that this, that you believe this will meet all the limits, pollution limits, but the, the particulate matter emissions limit that you put on the slide is, is from 1991. Von Green didn't even exist as a company, we, I just learned tonight, in 1991. This emissions limit that you're proud that they're meeting is, is very old. Since then, we've realized that PM 2.5, the very, very small particulates that come out of this kind of crematorium and all combustion, are, are much more hazardous than the bigger pollutants, which is the one that you're set a, a limit for. It can lodge in the deepest recesses of the lungs, it can get into the bloodstream. And yet you are not going to regulate that whatsoever from this crematorium. So that's, when people say this is an old standard, this is the old standard, the standard older than the Von Green Funeral Home itself. And similarly, the toxic, you know, but this is only, we got two weeks' notice of this hearing, which is in, not even in the same zip code, I realize just now, too. So we're still trying to understand the permit and all the toxic measurements, but those toxic calculations, the big table with all the toxic estimates of pollution, those are based on some crematorium in New Jersey in 1992. So that's very old, too. So, you know, given that the limits that you are certifying that this proposed crematorium can meet are so old, and the fact that this, these communities are so vulnerable, as your own permit indicates, an environmental justice measure of 95 out of 100...
He can take my three.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, so, I, I, I'll wrap up. I, and we'll, we'll put, I will, we'll need more time to take a look at the permit, and we will submit written comments. But I just want to point out that you are the only thing protecting people now. And your standards are old, and so it's appropriate to set, we're glad that you're trying to limit the bodies that come. Von Green only asked to cremate bodies for 12 hours a day, six days a week. It would be nice if you put that in the permit, you gave them what they asked for. Limit, so these, these types of limits, we need to take out the implants, there are a lot more implants in bodies than there were in 1992 now. All that emissions will go up the stack, that has no pollution controls whatsoever. So there are, we'll, we'll put more detail in the limits, in the, in the comments, but I just want to make it clear, your job is to protect our public health, and the limits that you've got in this permit are not.
Good evening, Thompson, Karen Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. Yes, I've lived in the Gogwys community for 54 years. My father brought me into this community at the age of 10, and I've watched it change over the years and everything. And I see the community coming, and, you know, everything's thriving, things are working in, to our advantage. But this crematorium that they're asking for, it is pollute, it will pollute the area. We have so many schools in this area, you know, and not only that, I am an asthma person myself. I walk every day, every day. I can't go out my house without this anabolic, without this inhaler. I cannot go out of my house. And when, when my asthma really kicks up on me, I have to put on, you know, use my anabolic, and it's like some, it's like an elephant sitting on my chest. I cannot breathe. So I'm asking you guys to please consider us, not just me, as a 64-year-old elderly lady in the community, think of, like they say, the kids. It is known fact that the brown and black communities have a high impact of asthma. So you're not looking at our kids, you're not looking at our future. They're the future, that's what we should be looking at. And Von Green, if you're still here, that's what you should be looking at them. You know, you have another place, somewhere up there in Randallstown, maybe there's a place like that. Like the gentleman said, what about the water? Maybe look into that. There are other avenues that you can use. Instead of putting this on York Road, where there's numerous traffic up and down, polluting our community already. So I'm just asking you guys to please look out for us.
Okay, the next five people I'd like to call up, Yvonne Williams, Genevieve Yeager, Bonnie, Cody, forgive me if I'm messing up everyone's names, I'm so sorry, Zoe Friedman, and Drew Schmidt-Purkins. Just need to say your names and stuff.
Yeah. Genevieve Yeager, G-E-N-E-V-I-E-V-E-Y-A-E-G-E-R. So I come here today as a Rosemont neighbor, but I'm also an educator and school psychologist, so I'm really here to advocate on this cause for educational and developmental months. What data do we have about the impact of the toxic pollutants that are emitted from a crematorium and undeveloping children? Of course, we don't know that, I'm asking now. Do we have accountable protocol policies in place to be mindful of our children when they commute from home to school, or ensuring air quality safety when these children go outside for any learning opportunities or any recreational opportunities? We have several schools located within a close vicinity to the business, a majority of them that sit in what we call the right wing of the Elmer Butterfly. There are significant data out there confirming that ingesting and being exposed to toxic chemicals as we develop are detrimental not only to a child's development, but their physical development, their cognition, and how they develop in the brain, and of course, their emotional development. We also have data and firsthand experience from just me as a teacher, but let's be real, we've got the data everywhere to confirm that our communities in that butterfly wing are already disproportionately impacted and disadvantaged by these chemicals, right? We've got the data that we've been talking about. I also know that as someone who wants to plan and start their own family, I have to consider this as well, right? For my own body's safety and as well, if I'm wanting to bring someone into this life, do I really want to start a family where I know the air quality is not as stellar? I know that if these conditions get worse, I'm really lucky. I have the accessibility to leave and relocate if needed, that's not what I want to do. I want to invest in this community, that's why I'm here tonight. I also know that other neighbors don't have that same luxury, nor do they want to even think that way. This is our community, we want to preserve it and make sure it can last for generations to come. I respect the fact that Von Green is doing what they can as a business to honor the dead, but I'm more concerned about its potential, potential impact on those who are living today.
Good evening, my name is Bonita Cody, I, my A's are terrible, so that's why you said Bonit.
Sorry.
I, I live in, B-O-N-I-T-A-C-O-D-Y. I've sat through a number of these meetings, I'm not going to go over any of those things, or even read this, but I just want to say that our community is vulnerable, very much so. And I listen to everything, and I think a lot of the people who request cremation don't really understand what they're doing to the community. There, it's, it's a financial issue, I understand those things, but until I really started working with the committee, did I really understand the, the problems? So, so I think that's one. You know, you can serve your constituents, but they really don't know what they're doing. I guess the other thing is, MDE as a state agency, I really think you're caught between a rock and a hard place. And until, and I'm going to wear my shirt until we change the state law.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's an incinerator, for the incinerator, you're not going to, but there's nothing we really can do, that's what I've decided. Our community is just going to be impacted. And hopefully we can, with these meetings, we can lessen it as much as possible, but we have to change the laws. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvonne Williams, Y-V-O-N-N-E, Williams. That's easy, it's easy to spell. I don't have anything written, in fact, on the signing sheet, it said, do you have a comment, yes or no? I just put maybe, because I wanted to see how things were going. I hear all the comments that everyone is making, and they're good comments, because everyone in here is concerned about the community. And it seems like everything is done. You know, we, we're going to, we're doing a lot of talking, and MDE has already made the decision. It seems like Von Green could care less about this community. You know, he doesn't, he doesn't live in, around here. How many hours do, does he spend at the funeral home on York Road? He has numerous funeral homes all over this, all over the Maryland area. So he won't be breathing in what's coming out these exhaust pipes. Very, a very short time. We live here, we will be breathing this 24/7. You know, it's not good. And I think when businesses have money, they get what they want. They get what they want, no matter what the community says. He has a business in this community, and he's, he's saying, you know, he's concerned about the community. No, you're not, because if you were concerned, you wouldn't put this in our community. We have people with health issues, we have many elderly people in the area, and this is going to, it's going to take place. It's going to take place, no matter how much we talk about it, because money costs, money moves things. We don't have the money that Von Green has. Von Green lives way away from these smoke stacks that's going to be up here. So that's all I have to say. I mean, we can talk till we blue in the face, but it's going to happen. People, I don't know, people just don't, businesses just don't care, they just want to make the money. He could very well put these things out away from communities. He gets up here and he says, people who want cremation, they don't like the air where you have to transport the bodies here. Hey, these people just want cremate, their, their loved ones cremated. You know, that's just an excuse, that's just an excuse. But that's all I have to say. But we can continue to talk, we can continue to talk, but it's going to happen.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Zoe Friedman, C-O-E-F-R-I-E-D-M-A-N. I live across the street from Von Green, across from York Road, I can see it from my dining room and my living room window. And I'm just so deeply disappointed that this permit went through. I was really holding out hope for the past two years, I was just thinking, there's no way they're going to be able to do this. Just that, there's just no way. And it is, it's happening. So I really request that MDE puts as many restrictions on this as possible. I live in my house with my husband and my three-year-old son, and I would like there to be scheduled times where I know that the incinerator is not running, so that I can open my windows and have some fresh air come in, or play outside with my son and know that we're breathing clean air. At least one day a week, two days a week, a few hours a day. I think there have, there have to be many more restrictions on this to make us all feel like we are happy to continue to live here. That's why I moved to that community, because I, so I could raise my son there. Thank you.
Good evening, Drew Schmidt-Purkins, I will spell that, D-R-U-S-C-H-M-I-D-T hyphen Perkins, P-E-R-K-I-N-S, and that's the short version of my name. When I first heard about this proposal, I was instantly appalled, but then I thought, no, 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 come on, you're smart, let's learn about this, let's see what the real issues are. People, I have changed my end-of-life documents to forbid cremation. I had no idea. I also learned that my car, my Subaru, has more pollution control standards than this crematorium. My son-in-law is beat up as, hell, 24-year-old truck has more pollution controls than this crematorium. And I have to get my car inspected regularly. I may not borrow my neighbor's car for that inspection. I mean, this is, this is crazy, right? This is wild, this is really wild, people. I do appreciate MDE, the steps that you have taken to try to do better on this. But if this is how good it can get, I'm now really freaked out. And just think about all the other communities out there with crematoriums that do not have these benefits. So MDE, your next steps, your to-do list, one, fix these standards. It is outrageous that these standards are what this industry is being based on. It's outrageous. 30 years old? No, let's get together, let's fix these standards, have real protective standards. Two, environmental justice can no longer be just a score. MDE, you need to be working with the environmental justice community on legislation... MDE, you need to be working with the environmental justice community on legislation to have real environmental justice, respect, and changes to regulation. Three, cumulative impacts matter. A single pollution source cannot be the only determinant. If there's 28 other pollution sources, we have to take that into account. Mr. Green, my family used your services. We didn't give a damn that my grandmother wants someone else to be cremated. It just was immaterial. How do you think, if this is really so important, that all those Baltimore County people would feel about being cremated in Baltimore City? Hmm, sorry, that's a little flippant, a little unfair, but that was just kind of an appalling remark. So MDE, you have work to do on this community, we're going to keep working. Senator Washington, we're going to keep working, we appreciate all your efforts over this session. Thank you.
Okay. The next batch of folks that have signed in saying that they would like to make a statement, Lisa Poliak, Angela Pangalia, oh, forgive me, I'm so sorry, Sandy McFadden, and Annick Barker.
My name is Lisa Poliak, that's L-I-S-A-P-O-L-Y-A-K. I'm an environmental engineer and a public health scientist, and for the last 35 years, I worked for the Army and DOD curtailing environmental exposures for service members. But today I'm here in private capacity providing some advice to the York Road Partnership. And I want to start by thanking the folks at MDE for the effort that they put into making this draft permit more comprehensive than any air permit that's currently issued to any crematorium in Maryland. And I say that as a person who's read nearly all of those permits. We think it's a good start, and it ushers in some new thinking about environmental justice and how it can and should be a factor in achieving your mission to protect the health of Marylanders. But we also believe that improvement's going to be made, because this permit frankly is affecting vulnerable families who live, as you've heard, less than 200 feet from the emissions that are going to be produced by this crematorium incinerator. And make no mistake, it is an incinerator. However, I want to address two issues that relate to the state of the regulation of crematory incinerators in Maryland right at this time, and these remarks are specifically for MDE. And the first is that there's only one emission limit right now for crematories in MDE regulations. It's for total particulate matter, and it hasn't been updated in over 30 years. You heard someone mention that earlier. It was promulgated in 1991, and that was six years before EPA published a single regulation on fine particulate matter, which is PM 2.5. So this regulation is significantly out of date. Not only that, but nearby states and EPA themselves, when EPA issue permits to tribal nations, regulate crematory emissions at a fraction of the level that Maryland does. MDE needs to update the crematory emission limit for particulate to reflect current science and current medicine. The science is out there, Maryland just hasn't needed to address it because cremation hasn't been a big industry until recently, but right now we know that there's close to 116 air permits for crematories in the state of Maryland at this time, and all of them have fewer restrictions than the permit that we're potentially getting in this city right now. The second thing that MDE needs to do is stop allowing crematory operators to use those outdated emission factors to demonstrate that they're meeting regulatory limits, notwithstanding that MDE has tried to do a good job coordinating with Murama about best practices. I've seen that document. That best practices document is just recycling and recirculating those old 30-year emission factors. They're 30 years old, they were done on one crematory incinerator back in New Jersey in 1992. The reason that they haven't been updated is there hasn't been a groundswell of need. EPA hasn't put the money into it, the states might not have the money into it, but something needs to be done to update the emission factors. They're irrelevant, they bear no resemblance, especially since most crematories today have, they're managing human remains that include medical devices, that include many, many metals that are not reflected in those current emission factors. And I'm going to ask for an extra minute of indulgence. Can I have that?
Please.
Yes.
Okay, you need to know that right now, there's a whole industry called crematory recycling, where crematories give up the ash that's produced in their crematoriums to recyclers and scrap metals, where they extract the metals that are in that ash for money. And by their own estimates, sometimes as much as $100,000 a year can be made by recycling the ash and extracting the metals that are in it. Things like cobalt and titanium and nickel and silver and gold and platinum and palladium. I asked some reps from MDE earlier, do you know, is anybody in Maryland doing this practice? Because the takeaway here is that if these metals are in the crematory ash and you can make money for them, they are most certainly going up the stack. And those emission factors that are in that best practices document bear no resemblance to all those things that are going up the stack. So I'm asking you, MDE, you need to find out if crematories in Maryland at this time are recycling their ash to make money off of the metals that are in that ash, because those folks, when they do that, in addition to the check that they get, they get a lab analysis that tells them exactly the chemical elements that are in there and the amounts. So there is scientific evidence of the amount of metals that are in the ash and that are going to the stack. I thank you for the extra.
My name is Angela Panglia, A-N-G-E-L-A-P-I-N-A-G-L-I-A. Oh, it's okay, no one will know. All right. I live about 1,000 feet from Von Green in the Radnor-Winston neighborhood. I found my version of the quote-unquote "American dream" here in Baltimore. I'm actually from Florida, but my spouse and I moved here back in 2016, and in 2021, at the age of 40, we were finally able to become homeowners in Radnor-Winston. Like most of the housing here in Baltimore, it's old. We found mold, asbestos, chipping lamp paint after we bought the place, but we did what we had to do to make our home safe on the inside. We fixed what we could control, because a few months after moving in, our child was born, our dream complete. And I remember driving around the neighborhood back then, seeing random signboard signs about crematoriums, and thought, hmm, there must be a lot of activists in this neighborhood, and this would be a really faraway problem. Because frankly, the idea of a crematorium being built so close to where we just had moved in to was like simply preposterous. The idea of a crematorium right off of busy York Road, surrounded by neighborhoods with children and families, is preposterous. Now, I'm not opposed to cremation, my own father was cremated back in Florida, but I am opposed to cremation happening right next to where people live. Now, as you fine-tune this permit and do the math, please remember your mission, MDE's mission, to protect and restore the environment for the health and well-being of all Marylanders. I want you to imagine yourself, and I don't know who I'm speaking to, because I can be a seat empty, people, except for you, Shan. I want you to imagine yourself living next door to the crematorium. Imagine your young children or grandchildren playing outside, your elderly parents gardening, yourself barbecuing after a long work week. Imagine yourself dreaming up the rest of your life in a home you never even thought you would own. We fixed the things we could control, but this is beyond me and my neighbors. This is where MDE has to step up and protect us. Remember that you serve the living. Thank you.
My name is Sandy McFadden, S-A-N-D-I, not Y, and last name McFadden, M-C capital F-A-double-D-E-N. I have been a resident of the Govens community for about 30 years or so, and I have been involved in the leadership of the York Road Partnership, where I serve now on the Board of Directors. I am also the Vice President of the Mid-Govens Community Association, and I have been the Community School Coordinator for Govens Elementary School for almost the last nine years, and I am recently retired, three weeks ago. Thank you. I want to ask a question tonight, as I was thinking about this, because I actually didn't want to do this. I've been testifying about this crematorium now for, I guess, almost four years now. We have been to Annapolis, and thank you very much, Senator. You have been amazing. Thank you for your support to our community. We have testified in the Senate, we have testified in the House of Delegates, and we continue to say the same thing. The question that I would raise is this: What is the risk with the installation of a crematorium in the heart of our community? And I, along with many of my neighbors and partner organizations, have spent thousands of volunteer hours working to bring investment to this community. And we are very proud to say that we have two brand-new 21st century schools in our neighborhood, we have secured millions of dollars in state funding for neighborhood improvements, and we have led initiatives with partners to receive down payment assistance to encourage renters to become homeowners in our neighborhood. Several blocks from the crematorium site have been designated as part of the Healthy Neighborhoods program to help build home ownership and attract new families. What is at risk? Well, all of this, all of this is at risk. Young families may not want to live in a community that they think is environmentally unsafe for their children and their families altogether. And they are concerned that what they are hearing about air pollution control and all of the things that we've been discussing may be very potentially damaging to their family and to the family, to the health of the family. All of the investments that I just talked about, and there's so many more, they're all catching up on decades of disinvestment from redlining and structural racism in our neighborhood. Your own environmental justice score says that this is one of the worst communities to locate a new pollution source. We've heard that over and over this evening. If MDE will not deny this permit request, then it has to place conditions in the permit that makes it strong and clear possible health, possible that the health and well-being of our neighborhoods and our community will be a priority concern for you. You need to know that in the midst of all that we're doing and all that is being proposed, we will be watching for accountability and compliance.
And I want to address the reluctance I see in the permit as it's written right now, and it's puzzling to me, because what I see is a nod to, yes, there should be some limits on a crematory placed within a densely populated community, of which I am a part. But then it stops short, and there's this profound reluctance and fear, I would almost say, to do the right thing, to do the common sense thing, and say, yes, of course, we will monitor the stack on a regular basis, and of course, we will make that data publicly available to the community that is affected by the emissions of that stack. Of course, we will spell out exactly which emissions we are monitoring and what their levels will, and we will do our darndest to make sure that the permitted levels are as stringent as possible, because we know and we fully understand that this is an enormous imposition on this community. Frankly, it should not exist, period. There are limits to our power, but we will use our power to the fullest extent, and MDE, this is your responsibility, and your reluctance to impose these very common sense measures is frankly baffling. And I hope that you will find the wisdom, the courage, and the will to do the right thing. Thank you.
T E R R Y W E I S S T E R. I have heard a lot of really quite important questions and recommendations that I really support here. There's one thing that hasn't been mentioned that I just wanted to bring up, and that is that I feel that the Maryland Department of Environment and Von Green both are putting a great deal of faith in an equipment company. I have one thing to say about that. They seem to feel that there is, that this company is devoted and important and special. One thing to say: Boeing.
My name is Myrna Newman, and I live in the Wilson neighborhood parking, York Road corridor. And my concern is that, I want to point out that MDE, Von Green, you all don't live in this community, but if you did, would you want this crematorium in your backyard? I have rode around the community and other counties, and I see those people in Hawthorne County, they don't want crematoriums in their backyards. So why would you all want to allow a crematorium here on this York Road corridor and these people's backyards? I live here, I don't want it. It needs to be moved, the permit needs to be denied. I thank you.
My name's Franklin Smith, F-R-A-N-K-L-I-N-S-M-I-T-H. I'm 70 years old, and I've lived in the Govens community for 68 years. I've seen a lot of things come and a lot of things go. I understood when you were saying this about, you know, the families and not taking the body somewhere else to be done and all of that. I was listening to all that, and it showed a lot of concern. But like I said, I lived there a long time, and I remember not long ago, you had drug dealers sitting right there on your property selling drugs 24/7. That wasn't important? That's our community. That's what I have a problem with, because you say you're doing one thing, but I seen something totally different. Anybody who ever turned that corner, they know what I'm talking about. And there's still some activity going on there. So like I said, you know, I understand why all of a sudden, yeah, it cleaned up a little bit, most likely because of this. Let's get the crematorium there. But I know what I saw, I know how it stayed there, and now all of a sudden, since all this talk, it's been lightened up a little bit. And you care for the community. Thank you.
So I live in Radnor-Winston, and I just want to speak directly to Mr. Green. I want to thank you, I didn't see you at the other meetings, I want to thank you for having the courage to come out here and listen to what we have to say. And I want to say something a little different to you, which is that you've heard the tip of the iceberg, the fraction of the tip of the iceberg of our the fraction of the tip of the iceberg of our community coming and saying, "We don't like this. We're concerned." People who have used your services, our senator, who has served this community, you know, all of us, with such dedication. And they're saying, "We don't like this." And I'm saying, "Imagine something else." It's not too late, Mr. Green. You could come up right now and say, "I've been not sleeping over this." Work with us. Imagine. If you were to say, "I'm pulling off this. I'm going to explore..." I don't know anything about water crematoriums. First I've heard of it, but I'm interested. "How can I work with this community so that I can meet the business needs that I want?" Do you know what you would get from this community if you pull off this right now? Gratitude, PR, business, like you could not even imagine. Come to us, please. I'm begging you. Thank you.
It worked really well when the previous gentleman picked up the microphones, so I'll try that. My name is Jean Lall, L-A-L-L. And I live south of Radnor Winston, in the northeast corner of Guilford. And I'm the only Guilford person that's spoken tonight, but I just wanted to say that I'm in deep sympathy with folks just a little north of us. But I started also from a position of sympathy with Von Green because I attended a service there, and I found their services to be admirable and worthwhile. But I've had... I'm having real trouble with the pollution issue. I've lived in... This month marks 50 years since I moved to Baltimore. I'm a Rocky Mountain girl, so I grew up with presumably clean air, though there was a lot of petroleum refining going on out there. But I moved to Baltimore 50 years ago. I brought up my little girl in Lakeside, near Northwood and Edner Gardens. And we dug in the backyard and got dirty and never worried. And when she went off to college, we bought our house in Guilford. And we wanted to be closer to the train station so my husband could commute to DC. And we took a... We were going to get the trim on our house painted, so they asked us to test and see if there was any lead in the paint. And the test showed that the paint was 7% lead. I don't think anybody ever made paint that was 7% lead. That was how I became aware that we were living four doors away from York Road and that we had half a century and more of vehicle or travel going up and down York Road and depositing vast amounts of lead and other pollutants on our house and our land. So consequently, I never tried to grow tomatoes and vegetables in my lovely yard. I grow a lot of flowers. Or I've learned to call, because I'm now a Baltimorean, I call them "flowers." So I grow a lot of flowers in my yard. I've become a real Baltimorean over the years. But I still remember what fresh air smelled like. And my 92-year-old husband every night wants to leave the windows open so we can have fresh air. And I can't quite explain to him that that's not a realistic expectation. And even though we wouldn't live as close to the crematorium, I'm just already so aware, we are actually quite close. But I'm just so aware of the depth of the pollution that's already... That children... If I had little children now, I couldn't allow them to make mud pies in my backyard. It would not be safe. The ground is not safe. So I just want to say... Creates so much of a scene here. I just want to say that I'm really sympathetic to the business desire to serve the customers. But I'm also deeply sympathetic to my fellow citizens who are living with even more pollution than I'm living with. And I do want to ask a question, just for information purposes. How many crematoria are there in Baltimore City? 20 years ago, 18 years ago, I carried a close friend to be... A body of a close friend to be cremated in the Green Mount Cemetery. As far as I know, that crematorium is there. But I'm just very curious to know, as we're going through these deliberations, how many crematoria are there in Baltimore City and how are they being regulated? So that's a question for the future. Thank you, everybody.
Try to skip this way. This is off the cuff because I heard about this meeting last night on, I believe, Channel 45. My name is Redmond Jordan. I live in the Canver Park community. And before I start off with, it's my personal feeling that cremation is increasing because the price of traditional funerals is off the chain now, right now. Most people can't afford it. Most people don't want cremation. But that's what they only can afford. We have, in this immediate area, we have two downs and center, two large senior citizen community within walking distance of Von Green, and we're talking about doing this. And the traffic, up and down York Road corridor. Then the next thing I wanted to bring up, this happened when I... I belong to Over Spree's Memorial Post 294. The post was named after Over Spree, he was killed in Vietnam. And it's the only African-American post in the state of Maryland today. And one of the things that people in here are familiar with is the PAC Act. And the PAC Act is dealing with the same thing what we're doing here today, for the service members that served in our country and was exposed to pollutants, exposed to environmental things that could best those. Since World War II, and it just happened to start today. And I'm speaking on behalf of Over Spree's, but at the same time, I am chairman of the Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation Commission. And one of the things I can tell you, I will, because I tried to get those statistics, of how many veterans are living within our precinct area that basically is involved with the PAC Act and the impact that crematorium can have as far as only health and the psychological experiences of breathing, bad air, and the smell of death. And I'm talking from a veteran's standpoint. And I will go back to the veteran community and foster some help as far as how the veterans feel about a crematorium in the middle of the city when you've got places all outside, but you want to bring it in the middle of the city. I'm going for that now.
Hello. My name is Donna Blackwell, and I'm a resident of Winston-Govans Improvement Association. And I'm also the vice president of York Road Partnership. So my... I've listened to the comments, and I know everything is everything. But one of the things I want to point out to everyone is that it behooves MDE to update and make sure that they are monitoring what's going on. Because this is 2024, the 21st century, and you're using 30-year-old data? That does not compute in my mind either, and it should not be computing in yours. As everyone has stated before, we are here for our future. This is the living that we're concerned about. If we don't do nothing now, what's going to happen to our children's children's children? So it behooves all of us in this room, especially MDE, MDE to update their regulations and their monitoring practices. And I also want to throw out to my community, we need to start looking for green burial. We need to... We need to direct where we're putting our money at. If Von Green wants to cremate, and they've found the need, an economic need, then damn it, let's go ahead and do water cremation. Everybody makes it in their will, we're going to do water cremation. We want a green burial, what the hell they going to do? They going to go ahead and do it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chelsea. I live on... Chelsea... Hi, my name is Chelsea Hemphill. I live on Rossiter Avenue, so right down the street from Von Green. When I first moved here a couple of years ago, I was like, oh, that's a beautiful funeral home service. Or it looked like a beautiful place. What I recently found out was that the reason why they're pushing for this project in our backyard is to better serve our community and the people who have died in our community. I completely understand that. But what I don't understand is why they're not acknowledging the implications for the people that are still alive today. I live with a bunch of individuals who are way older than me. They've been breathing this air a lot longer than me, and they have a lot of, you know, health complications. I want to look out for them. I want to be the voice for them. But also, my neighbors have a bunch of kids. I mean, I don't understand what we're doing. And I understand that when these pollutants are put up into the air, this goes everywhere. But I just get really upset when I look at my neighbors that I see every day, who are already struggling with their health issues. So, you know, I understand that this is pushing full steam ahead, but I think karma is a real thing, and I am excited to see what transpires in the future.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kelly Mayer. I live in the Guilford community. I have been sitting here tonight, and I've really learned a lot, even though I've been, you know, in fact somewhat in the opposition of this. First of all, I just want to acknowledge the passion and the courage of the neighbors and community organizers who have been having a consistent drumbeat of opposition for four years on this topic. So I'm a data person too. Two pieces of data that stood out to me tonight were that this MDE has assigned a 95 rating. So many people have referenced it tonight. And we're using 30-year-old data to create regulations. Why are we not using the data that we have, and we're putting all of our emphasis around the data that we don't? It doesn't make any sense. I'm asking you all to do better.
Good evening. My name is Ed Flanagan. And I've been a member of the community, if you will, of Old Homeland in Govans since after the Army, 1972. And we are parishioners at St. Mary's, a Catholic church on York Road. And I lived in Florida for about 10 years. And then I came back to Baltimore because I had to have operations, et cetera, through the BA. And then we bought a home on Lyman Avenue, if you all know where that was or is, by the little firehouse. Or the big fire, and the little library there and so forth. So we really love the community. And Spring Lake Way and the Cathedral Church as well, and so forth. And we just really do not believe that Von Green, that there's any place for a crematorium in a residential neighborhood. Now, I know that there are businesses there for many years, many, many years. However, when a crematorium comes in, it just seems to be that it is a bit of a difference indeed with a fumo home, et cetera. And would it be taking on more people? I understand that rules have been set, et cetera, and so forth. But one thing in the Walter Place I've learned is change, that word "change." And things can change. And the next thing you know, the more cases coming in, if you will, more bodies, et cetera. I don't think that that's particularly attractive in a residential area like Guilford, or Homeland, or Old Homeland, or that area right there. And so I'm totally, as I say, 153% against it. Thank you.
Hi. I promise I'm not trying to take up the mic, but I had a rain glass. My name's Genevieve Veiger again. And one of the thoughts I had was the fact that I, as a psychologyologist, also operate under COMAR. What I find really silly is again and again and again, we've had many people come up here and ridicule the fact that they are doing decision-making based off of 30-year-old data. I'm mocked using assessment tools that are older than 10 years old, and I can't report off data that is older than three years old. And that's a school-based level. So I'm curious to know why this branch of COMAR is allowing themselves and holding themselves accountable to using 30-year data when I, as a public educator, am held to a much higher standard? I mean, that's how it is in most parts of life, right? But I just find it so interesting when we're talking about environment that's impacting everyone at all facets of life, right? That's one of the big things that I know is a point of contention with the upcoming election. I know it's a point of contention in ensuring a safe community here in Baltimore, right? For me, I'm just wondering, why are we using this old data, right, from an MDE perspective? Especially when we know we've had the two hottest summers on record in the past few years, right? And that's not even talking about the other things in the air, as it's hot and sticky and muggy. But I'm also wondering from a sense of, we call it fidelity in education, how am I ensuring that this crematorium is running the way it's supposed to? What are we doing to ensure accountability? How are we making sure they're doing things correctly? We just had an environmental engineer come up here earlier, saying that, listen, money's money. I love money. If I can sell metals and make extra money on the side, why wouldn't I? If there's nothing regulating me to do so. What are the consequences if I don't follow fidelity, right? And fortunately, even if we put in some monetary consequences, it doesn't stop a child ingesting or taking in those fumes, or an adult, or marginalized, you know, communities. We can try to put a monetary slap on the wrist, but that doesn't stop me ingesting it or other community members. So I'd be curious to know, what are we doing to ensure that fidelity and implementation of using the crematorium? And also, when does MDE plan to update their data to make data-based decision-making? Because last time I checked, I get a pretty big slap on the wrist if I use 30-year-old data. But shocker, population changes, environment changes. So what are we doing to move forward? Okay, folks, are there more people that would like to make a statement for the record tonight? You certainly can.
I have just a question. Some people have said that the decision is made.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
A permit has not been issued. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the permit still has not been issued. We're of the position that it should not be. So we've worked at it. You've worked hard for four more years. And I know it gets hard, but, you know, it takes time. But continue. This is not over. This is not over. And just wanted to clarify that a permit has not been issued, that this is considered just an example, right? So therefore, I just wanted to clarify. So therefore, the applicant should not assume, based on this preliminary approval, that they can move forward, that they will necessarily get an approval. Is that correct? That this is not... The two are not related. In other words, if one gets this conditional, well, not conditional, just this temporary draft...
They're going to review everything, and you guys can hear me. And at the end of the comment period, all the comments, you guys have put in. So at the end of the comment period, all of the written comments we received and all of the comments placed here tonight will be reviewed, and a final determination will be made after that. So this is not the final determination. This is just a public hearing at this point.
Again, there has been no final determination. Information that was just... Information that was just, I just want to clarify and just...
It could be months because there's so much to review. Oh, easily more because there's so much.
Just to clarify, a final determination has not been made. As part of the review, any information, new information that is coming to you has to be considered as a part of that final determination. Correct. And just again clarifying that there should not be any construction or assumption on the part of the applicant that they can, by virtue of this temporary determination, should move forward. So they should not move forward with any acquisition or any additional building or construction or incur any costs during this period until the final determination is made. Would that be correct?
I don't know if you mean by cost.
Well, in other words, what I've heard in some of these debates, what I've heard in some of these hearings isn't a concern about the applicant having made some expenditures and therefore it would be not fair to the applicant to then not give them the final, to not make the final approval. I just wanted to clarify that in this instance, that there are no, we're putting very on notice, that no expenditures or anything should be made until a final determination. Would that be correct?
Yeah. If an applicant chooses to purchase equipment or whatever before they have a permit, then that's on them. They are not allowed to install or operate unless they have a permit.
And the fact of a purchase of equipment or expenditure on consultants or plans or anything is incumbent on the applicant and again, is not to be considered as a part of the deliberation of whether or not to approve the final. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Saunders. P A U L I N E S A U N D E R S. This is so unlike me. I do not speak out like this, but I had to say something. Now, Mr. Vaughn Green, he is not a monster. He's a nice man, but I understand. I've been to many services at his establishment. I haven't had to use it, but I have told my son, when something happens to me, then that's where I want to go. I can walk to his establishment from where I live, but I do not want crematory in the neighborhood where houses are adjacent, they're right there. I asked my pastor, would you want one right next door to you? I mean, think about it. I mean, I said, he's got one place on your Route Forty, Liberty Road, and there's plenty of land. The parking lot is not that big, right there. You know, sometimes you have to wait for something to leave so you can go in. He's a nice man, but I just don't want, I live on Winston Avenue. I can walk to his establishment, but I don't want one in my neighborhood where I can smell it still there, whether I smell it or not, it's there. And I'm still thinking about having my son take care of you.
So the question was, if you are sending in comments as part of the formal record, will you get an acknowledgement? I will be sending an acknowledgement back out saying, "Thank you for your comments." You'll have a record of when they're in. And again, we have until August twenty-ninth to... We tried that one again. October twenty-second to send in comments to me. And if you've already sent in comments, you can amend them and add more, no problem at all. And if anyone would like to come up tonight and have, you know, add their comments to the record here, we have time.
Can we also get like a full record of how many people have commented comments and to have that transparency to see everyone's comments?
I can probably put something together at the end when I've received everything and make it available, sure.
And that can be on the website?
Or I'll email it out to everybody. I'm not sure what we'll do yet, but I'll make sure people get it, sure.
It would just be nice to know how many people have submitted comments, what the comments were. We've heard some comments that there is...
There will be a response to comments document that summarizes all the comments that we're receiving.
I mean, there may be grouped in, may not be every specific comment, but if there's somebody that asked about the EJ score, so we would have a general answer for that one to take care of everybody's concern. Or, you know, that, I guess it was the year for the emissions data and that would be, you know, so it may not be very specific, like a hundred and twenty-two people's different comments, but it could be, you know, this is the discussion, these were the concerns and our answer all the way through them.
And the tabulation of how many people commented and came and all of that. So showing the...
Yep, this is all public record, so yes, we can do that. Okay, and again, if anyone else would like to make a statement tonight to put into the record, you're welcome to come up. You can ask questions as part of your testimony, but they won't be answered directly tonight. That's what goes into that response to comments document so that... Oh, well, if you want, okay, well, I'm going to back up really quick. For the people who ask questions as part of their testimony, we will address that so that everybody who is interested gets to hear what that question was and what the answer is to it. So that's why we don't answer them during the testimony part tonight. But if you have a question that's not related to testimony, if you want to, I'll, we'll be here, I can talk to you afterwards. Sure. Anybody else want to come up?
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to thank everyone for your time tonight. I appreciate you coming out and take my business cards on the tabletop front to feel free to give me a call or send me an email.